Great. Good evening. Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. In compliance with Governor Cuomo's executive order pertaining to public meetings during the COVID-19 outbreak, tonight's Aranda Quay planning board meeting is being conducted using Zoom. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Excuse me, to the nation indivisible and liberty and justice without, amen. Sorry, my uh. Got caught there. Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. This meeting is available for live viewing on Facebook, live listening via the phone and information provided on the town's website. The meeting will also be rebroadcast on ICAT government government access spectrum channel thirteen oh three. Tonight, for each case subject to a public hearing, we will follow the similar order of operations as we normally do. Except tonight, we are using remote access options. Applicants will be invited to join the meeting by video or call when their case is called. Once the public hearing is open, public input on each case can be received either by email or phone. Similar to the regular meetings, each person providing public comment will need to give their full name and address. They will be given up to five minutes to provide their comments to the board. Once your comments have been received, we will move on to the next email or call if any are waiting. We ask anyone sending in comments to put the address or case number in the subject line of the email during the public meeting. Public hearing for each case staff will monitor the planning board at arandaquay.org email. It's planningboard@arandaquay.org email. The emails will be read into the record by staff. Please be sure to provide your name and address for the record. Or the public can call in using the information provided on the website and displayed at the bottom of the screen on Facebook. While the public is listening to the meeting on the phone, they can provide comment on the current case by virtually raising their hand by pressing star nine on their phone. If you call in to make comment on a public hearing case, you will receive the prompt on the phone that you have been unmuted. That is your cue to speak to the board. On behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you for your participation and patience as we navigate through these remote public hearings. To that point, I do want to announce that one of the cases has decided to withdrawn for tonight's agenda, and that would have been case number PB two zero two zero dash oh five dash one. Upon the matter of request by Keystone Novelties to install a temporary seasonal tent for fireworks sales on premises at twenty-two fifty-five East Ridge Road in the Culver Ridge Plaza in a C business district has been withdrawn and will not be a public hearing tonight. With that, Michelle would like you'd like to call the first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on the agenda is case number PB twenty twenty dash zero three dash four. Upon the matter of request by Land Tech Planning and Surveying, acting as agent for Scott Donaldson for subdivision approval to create a five lot, single family dwelling subdivision on tax ID zero seven six point one nine dash four dash six four and zero seven six point one nine dash four dash six one point one eighteen ninety and eighteen forty-eight Hudson Avenue in an R one residential district. I believe John is trying to not.
So I see that John is on as an attendee. John, can you let me know if you can, you're able to speak right now? If you want to just hold on for one minute, I think we're having some technical difficulties. The normal controls I would have are don't appear to to be working. And so I want to just. If you'll bear with me for one moment. John, are you able to speak right now? Can you hear the this phone call? So I I do apologize to the board. I'm actually going to be reaching out to our ICAT expert to see if I can resolve this. I'm just going to mute myself for a moment while I do that.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'm gonna reach out to the applicant's agent and see if they're able to. Or Michelle, if you're able to quickly reach out to the applicant's agent, ask them to hang up and to try reconnecting. And for everybody watching or listening, I do apologize for the delay. The menu items are a little bit different for this setup, and we're not sure why. It might just be a a problem with how the we're we're just trying to figure out the technical difficulty that we're having so we can solve it. So thank you for everybody's patience while we do this. This is how we end up on YouTube for Zoom Zoom meeting blunders.
Carrie, any public information you want to share?
Um, I wish I had some good news or new things to share. I do apologize. I'm just seeing. If I can control.
Well, someone on Facebook asked if they're if people are allowed to have garage sales to share. I know that's not under our jurisdiction.
Yeah, so you know what? As it is a matter of code enforcement to determine when that's allowed on the under phasing. We are, I've got to take a look at the detailed sort of the guidance for each phase to determine when that would be of a permit permitted activity. And when it's it permitted. What's what the the requirements might be as far as social distancing mask requirements, things things like that. We are research, we are looking into that. There's a question that's come up a couple of times.
Is that the financing for this project?
No, no, it is not.
Oh, by chance, is the other applicant on if we want to knock that one off?
Well, the other applicant is on. I'm not, I'm able to promote them. Normally, I would have a function where I could unmute them. And I, my only two options are to add them as a panelist. So the only issue was we're trying to get John on board. He had a conflict and was trying to navigate this application. We were made a change in the agenda for that purpose.
Carrie, he said that he can hear you.
Yes, I just don't have a way for him to hear us or to or for us to hear him speak. That's the problem.
Okay.
So normal, I don't have it on mute. Normally, I'd be able to mute or unmute his line, and that's not a viable option. So now I'm I apologize. I'm just trying to figure out with from the technical side of things, what needs to change? And if I have the ability to make the change from my side or for us to be done from the town hall side.
Carrie, as a workaround, could he call one of us and see if we can play it back through the speakers?
I don't know if we, you know, that might be the option. I'm good. So, John, I know you can hear me. My tech, the technical advice I'm getting, and I don't know if they're changing a setting while they're doing this is for you to hang up and call back in again. So I appreciate your humoring us with this call back and try one more time, but maybe third time is going to be the charm. Okay, so he has hung up and followed the direction. So he definitely can hear us. And we are hopefully, I'll be able to add him back shortly. Nate Stone from ICAT has joined us so he can log in and see what's going on and see if we can get this thing figured out.
Somebody also asked, how do they raise their hands on the phone?
If they're on the phone, that's a good, that I can provide guidance. If you're on the phone and when the time comes and the public hearing is open, you simply press star nine on your phone, and that will raise their hand, and then I should be able to unmute. Oh, well, this is fun. My only concern, I don't know if the John, I think we can hear you now.
I can hear me?
We can.
Oh, wow, that's great.
All right. Well, that was very nice. Thank you for waiting. We do apologize for the delay. So without further ado, if you'd like to provide your presentation to the planning board, they are all ears.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank you for moving me up on the agenda first of all, because in this new world, I do have a little bit of a conflict and have to attend another meeting. So I want to thank you for that. For the benefit of the public, I'll do a quick overview of the project. This project's located on the east side of Hudson Avenue. It's about one point four acres in size. On the prod, there's an existing historic house, and the rest of the land is behind the quick fill station. We're proposing a five lot subdivision. These lots meet all the minimum standards for the R one code. We're proposing a common driveway for all the homes accessed off Hudson Avenue. In conjunction with that, the utilities that we're proposing are dedicated sanitary sewer system that extends from Small Ridge Lane. Also associated with that is a new water main extension and hydrant into the project. Storm sewer will be directed towards an existing eighteen inch storm sewer pipe that comes from the east from Floral Drive. This is a relatively flat, unapproved site. And drainage will go that way. The common driveway has been a major issue with this project from the start of the project. We've listened to both town staff, DPW, and the fire district and fire chief regarding the common driveway. And we've made several changes to the plan during its migration towards approval. First of all, coming off of Hudson Avenue, we have a twenty foot wide pavement for vehicle access. Associated with that, we have a four foot striped area for pedestrian walking. At the end of that eastern road, we have a fire truck turnaround that meets the minimum standards for fire trucks. As as you drive south along the newly created lots on this common drive in the area of the proposed fire hydrant, the pavement has been widened from twenty feet from the common drive to twenty-six feet wide along the area of the hydrant to allow emergency vehicles to pull to one side and other vehicles to pass during an event. Previous plans showed access to Small Ridge Drive through a an easement to the fire department or to the town of Aranda Quay in that area. Originally, it was going to be a gravel area with grass on it. After further review from the from the fire marshal, that really wasn't going to be a feasible option. So after discussions with my client, we are going to propose that area, that sixteen foot strip that will be paved in conjunction with the common drive. And at the end, the Small Ridge Drive, there'll be a gate with a lock for the fire department for their emergency access only. It's not intended to be a through road and will not serve as as one. So that those comments and changing that is something that happened after the workshop last week. We received a memo from the fire marshal on the fourteenth, and we've updated that plan and sent you, I believe, electronic copies. We also provided some additional details related to that issue with showing signage, no parking. That that traveled way will withstand a truck load of seventy-five thousand pounds. And we also added notes regarding snow storage areas along that common drive. That was the main issues or main conversations we had, both the last workshop and the last planning board meeting. And I guess without taking too much more of your time, I'll stop and address any questions you have.
So does the board have any questions, any discussion? I'm I'm trying to find the latest one. Michelle, can you tell me what date that was sent out?
Yeah, I'm looking for the same.
The fifteenth. Five fifteen.
It's from Michelle Allen.
Hold on. Yep, five fifteen from Michelle. It's titled Hudson Avenue Estates, Hudson Avenue Subdivision. I do have a question. And I I believe it's actually out of our purview, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Is the because that driveway to the south is not going to be used all the time, is that going to be impervious or pervious material that it's paved from?
It's going to be pervious, consistent with the common drive that runs along the west property line. So for all intensive purposes, this is going to have a driveway on two sides of the lot.
So that that the note I think I'm reading here, it says asphalt or approved material for fire apparatus apparatus access only designed for seventy-five thousand pounds load. So it could be anything that's approved as long as it will hold seventy-five thousand pounds.
Yeah, we had some conversations with my client regarding some kind of geotechnical material that allow grass to go through there. And although that may be the case in the end, that's an economic decision and something that he'll look at and begin at the end. But we want to meet the requirements for the fire department and make sure this is a safe place.
I think either way that it's fine as long as it meets what the fire department is asking for. The only, I did have a question about the fire department had asked about the connection to Small Ridge and said that it needed to be sixteen feet in width and not and and not offset. So how have has that been able to be addressed?
Well, we don't own any property further south, and that's a major issue with this project from inception. But I think we're going to deal with Mr. Kylie. It is public land. It is the public right of way of Small Ridge that we'd have to put a small section of pavement within the Small Ridge Road right away to make it aligned. I don't see that being a showstopper. So it's basically like asking for a driveway permit from the DPW.
Okay. And this um, this access road will be plowed during the winter?
Yep, plowed just like the common drive.
We did have a comment about the signage for the hearing. Has that, is that up and on display?
I know that we kept the public hearing open, and that was the issue that came up last meeting. I didn't get any direction to repost a sign. And I think that's why the chairman extends the public hearing till tonight. But I didn't get any further direction from staff to put a sign up.
And just for for as an FYI, by code, the requirement for public notice is the notice in the town paper, which this public hearing certainly met. And the the mailing, those are the two forms of public notice that are absolutely required. Anything else that we do is sort of above and beyond. So the fact that the signage was not on display on the property doesn't mean that the town hasn't met or the applicant hasn't met. It's due diligence for notification.
John, forgive me if I missed it, but have you denoted snow storage on your plans at all for the the common?
Yeah. It's on sheet two of the utility plan. I sent you sheet one of four. Snow storage is one label kind of down in that bottom area where we show this, the new notes regarding the turnaround, snow storage area. We got about six feet of land between the proposed fence and the driveway, and I assume the way the plows articulated, they'll just push snow in that area. We can add additional locations if you feel the need as well.
Any other questions from the board members?
Not a question, but I just wanted to make sure that the applicant's agent saw the email from the Hodges.
Yeah, I I've seen them. I'm I understand they're a very concerned neighbor of this. They've they've lived in a commercial area. They leave they right behind fireplace fashions and and this parcel stayed dormant for many years. So this is going to be a change for them. Some of their issues, although very technical, have been addressed. You know, they were questioning slopes of storm pipes and things like that. This is a very flat site. Stormwater guidelines really want us to put stormwater back into the ground where it comes from. So from the closest point. So that's why the pipes are perforated. We're not looking to the state DOT for anything regarding this project. This is a county road, so we're not doing anything related to that. I don't know how to, you know, some of those issues are emotional. They they did pick up a question regarding the town of Greece being referenced on our plan. That was on a detail with a Ballard detail that we had in the town of Greece. So we're going to modify that. We'll take care of that in our final review. There is no homeowners association proposed. This is going to be by deed restrictions and declarations. So we're not doing anything like that. Monroe County Water Authority has reviewed the plan. They're they're good with it. We are proposing an eight inch main, which is typical. The six inch main that we're tying into is is smaller than what than the main we're proposing. But Water Authority, that's their purview. Monroe County DOT has reviewed it preliminarily, and obviously will sign the plan prior to the to the chairman. Trying to think what else I could. Yeah, again, there's some grading that they're talking about, but again, this is a very well graded site. It's it's flat. The houses are set appropriately. We're not proposing any dirt removal from the site. The excavation of the homes will suffice for the fill required around the homes. So again, I understand their their concerns. We addressed it with a board on board fence that that will perimeter the east side and the west side so that the neighbors are buffered. And you know, if Mr. Hodge has anything directly he'd like to speak to of me about, I can definitely take his call or email and try to work with them, and we'll work with them as this project moves into construction.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Nope. Okay, with that, I I believe we would, do we do see, do you want to walk us through Seeker first, or do we do the public hearing first, Carrie?
Um, I would say you would go through the public hearing or the, my understanding is the public hearing was held open or continued from last month. It was not closed. If if that's the board's understanding, then you could go ahead and open the public hearing. And if anyone raises their hand, we can have them speak at as part of the hearing.
So I hope regarding case number PB two zero two zero dash oh three dash four for Hudson Avenue is open up the public hearing at this time.
So if somebody were to be interested in speaking, they could press star nine, and that should raise their hand. All right, I do have somebody. Oh, goodness. Okay, I know that the caller can hear me because that we learned that lesson with John Traba. Zoom has recently done an update according to Nate Stone, our ICAT extraordinary. And we're, we have a funny feeling that there might have been some functionality changes as far as the host controls that we didn't account for. So I'm not, I gotta see if I can move him to able to speak. So bear with me for a moment.
In the meantime, Carrie, would you like us to read into the record the emails that we did receive on this?
That's up to you, Chairman, if you want to do that.
Michelle, could you please assist us there and read the, I believe we see, leave, received at least two? Possibly from the same person.
Yes, sir. There were two. So the first one that I received, it was received today at three forty-three PM from Mr. Fred Hodge. He said, good afternoon, I have several comments related to this subdivision proposal. Final plan one, will the egress and ingress become a part of a community association or a dedicated right of way? Number two, will the thirteen foot wide easement be wide enough for maintaining both water and both sewer utilities? Number three, will the Monroe County Water Authority assume the responsibility of the water main hydrant and opportunuses? Or will the association retain ownership and maintenance? Under the utility plan, number one is the sixteen inch subgrade access drive intersection wide enough for a fire truck? Number two, where does the Monroe County Water Authority six inch water main end? And the eight inch private water main start? Any details? Number three, is a zero percent grade sufficient for a storm sewer? Why is there no slope? Why is it perforated? Is this a, is this a detention pond? Any possibility the water seeping out of the perforated storm sewer will end up in basements of the houses on Floral Drive? Number four, I calculate over thirteen thousand square feet of pavement requiring snow removal. Where is the designated area for the plowed snow to be stored? Is there enough space? Grading plan, although zoning requires the minimum distance of the front yard to be fifty feet. However, if you include the road, the setback is reduced to only twenty feet. And then he said in the details, correct the reference to the town of Greece. That was from Mr. Hodge. And the other one I received was also from a Mr. Rob Hodge, and that was at four twenty-four PM today. The respective board members, I am writing in to voice my concerns regarding the application and intent to develop a five home subdivision on one point four five acres located at eighteen forty-eight and eighteen ninety Hudson Avenue. On Floral Drive, as previously voiced, believe this project needs to be reduced in scope. I ask that you consider the below points this evening. I ask that you consider the below points this evening. Bullet point number one, I pointed out that the required signage notifying the public of the hearing last month had not been installed. When brought up by the applicant had, the applicant had indicated that perhaps the town provided sign had fallen over. To date, there has still been no effort to comply with the requirement as shown in the attached examples. Regarding the installation of a fire access road, this effectively reduces a significant portion of land available to use on lot five. This the, this future resident will never be able to erect a shed playground or anything or place anything in that area and have a portion of their yard plowed. Additionally, I would like to understand what consideration is being taken as the newly proposed excess road and gate is at an offset as indicated by the fire department. Is the plan to modify the current grass right of way on Small Ridge to accommodate the fire department's concern? Also, has the highway department indicated how they're going to modify their plowing to ensure that the snow is cleared from the Small Ridge right of way side of the gate? Fire Department still has concerns about around the parking regulations being adhered to. How is it, how is that going to be managed and addressed as this is a small parcel for five lots to be placed? A request that the plan be updated to reflect this a private road versus private driveway as defined by New York State DOT policy and standards for the design of entrances to state highways. Additionally, this road should be constructed in accordance with the pal of the policy and guidelines as well as town requirements. Residential driveway, a driveway serving four or fewer private homes for an apartment building or for four or fewer family units. Subdivision road, a road, drive or street laid out in a developed residential area by a contractor builder or company responsible for developing the area. This includes a new driveway serving more than four private homes or a multiple unit dwelling containing more than four family units. In closing, I'm not in opposition of development on the land parcel in question, but the scope and the scale of this project should be reconsidered. The need for an excess road and its impact on the current and future residents as well as need to ensure plowing and parking is in compliance for safety can be mitigated by reducing this plan down to four lots versus five. Also, this project should be tabled and included on the agenda for next month's planning board meeting once the applicant can install the required public notice sign within the timeframe outlined. Uh, Robert Hodge.
Did we get the other person back on?
Okay. I do apologize. So um, I believe um, so the caller should be allowed to speak now that if the person who's raised their hand. Um, we're I not me, I'm not able to, I'm still experiencing the technical difficulty, but um, you should be able to hear that person who expressed interest in speaking. If that person can hear me, they can, it's their turn to talk. Just need to provide your name um, and your address.
Hi Carrie, yes, this is Robert Hodge, one ninety-three Floral Drive.
Okay, great.
We can hear you.
Everybody can hear you.
Thank you. So uh, yeah, Michelle and and board, I certainly appreciate uh, the opportunity. Um, Michelle, thank you for taking the time to to read the email. Um, I did, I did post a quick comment on the the Facebook page here as uh, I wasn't certain if I'd be able to speak, but um, to that to that effect, right? I I do request that the the signage be installed to provide adequate notification. You know, I I can appreciate the the newspaper posting and and postcards arriving in people's mailboxes. Over with the pandemic and and our way of life being impacted, I I believe that a project of this scale be should be posted for the public um, as Hudson Avenue is a major road in Aronacote. But the posted sign is noted and outlined as a requirement in in the application and it should be treated as such. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak, Carrie?
I don't believe so.
When you're positive, let me know.
Okay, I don't see any other raised hands. I'm just going to um, and it, Mr. Hodge, I just want to verify, your number starts with seven five?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just, okay. So at this point, are you done providing your comment to the board?
I am, yes, I.
Okay, so my only, and I do apologize, uh, because of the technical difficulty, the normal menu of items I have is available to me during meetings is very limited. And so my option now for this for you is to remove you, and I certainly don't want you to take offense to that. But um, I in order for the uh, for the um, anybody else to be able to speak, I'm going to have to remove you. Otherwise, you will, your your audio is going to be um, available during the whole meeting. So I don't want you, you certainly can call right back in.
I can just remain on mute here.
Okay, that's fine. So if you want to mute yourself, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Sure, no worries. Thank you.
And then you can listen in. Thank you. And then um, uh, Chairman, it looks like um, the applicant's agent is still here um, and on the phone. So I don't know if
Yes.
I don't have any other speakers identifying themselves.
No other speakers?
No.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Sharaba, would you like to address the points that were raised?
I would, uh, John, before you begin, I'd just like to make note that there are no additional emails that came into the planning board email as well. Oh, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
So uh, you guys hear me?
Yes.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, Mr. Hodges' comment made verbally this evening, I'll let what staff noted is to cover that regarding the signage. Um, I'll go through his email from this afternoon or the final plat, the ingress egress. Um, i- issue, this is a private road. It's not dedicated. Uh, and will have a cross access easement and numerous language and 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 um, restrictions and things associated with these lots as they transfer. Number two, will a thirteen foot wide easement be enough to maintain both water and sewer utilities? If you look at the plan, the plan, the sewer, sanitary sewer runs along the east property line. That is within a twenty foot easement. The water is on the other side of the project. Um, and that's along um, the easement that's within the common drive, and I think that's in a forty foot easement. So they are separate and distinct easements and both readily approval by both agencies. He has the Monroe County Pure Waters and the Water Authority. Number three, will the, will Monroe County Water Authority assume this is a water main? Uh, this is a water main extension, as I noted previously. Um, because um, we wanted to install a hydrant in this project for public safety. We've kind of done this with two inch water services, but the hydrant is what's needed for public safety. That will be a main extension approved by Water Authority and then individual services will be tapped off that main. Um. Utility plan is a sixteen inch subgrade, um, enough access. We're not proposing a sixteen inch um, road. We're doing a sixteen foot road uh, which was required and noted by the fire department. So we believe that um, does work. Number two, does a six inch water main versus an eight inch water main? Um, new standards for water main design within Monroe County is to install eight inch water mains. So we are upgrading from a six inch in the old subdivision to an eight inch in the new subdivision. Uh, it's Monroe County Water Authority's purview on that size. If they feel it should be reduced, we will do so. But um, those edits will be made as they review the plan. Number three, about the percentage grade. Um, this area is lower than all the other properties around, so it's 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 very flat. And there's actually depression in this area. So that's why we are directing the stormwater in a very flat pipe. And this does meet D E C requirements for stormwater management. So the perforated pipe is to allow water to go into the ground. Uh, we do not want this water to go into the neighbors basements. It's not intended to. Um, so that's what's going on there. Uh, we talked a little bit about snow storage. She says thirteen thousand square feet of snow storage. You know, this is a private property, so people are going to have their private driveways and plowed. Um, so snow storage will occur not only in the areas noted on the plan as requested by the fire department, but we have other areas at the end of stub roads, in front yards, on side yards, uh, where snow will be um, uh, stored. Um, number, the last point he made was around the town of Greece. As I mentioned, that was in a detail in the back regarding a bollard that protects a hydrant. We'll modify that in future plans. Uh, going back to his other email is more regarding uh, the signage again. The next statement he made regarding the insulation of the fire access road and significant portion of the land uh, is used up on lot five. Um, he is correct, um, but numerous lots have easements uh, that encumber them. Um, the the lots on uh, between one seventy-one and one sixty-one Small Ridge, there's a twenty foot uh, storm sewer easement. Um, you know, so it's typical in development that utilities and access roads have easements over them. So I don't see an issue. They're not going to build a four thousand square foot house on this. Their minimum house requirements will be met. Um, I think it's the building department's uh, process when a building permit is requested, they have to bring the house plans. The house plans have to be shown that it fit on the lot prior to construction. So I think the normal town of Aronacote building process will suffice for um, meeting the requirements of that lot size. Uh, we also understand that sheds and things can't be built in easements. And um, but there is room for sheds on this lot. It would be have to be in the northeast corner of the property for a shed. The fire department has concerns regarding um, parking and the common road. I think we've addressed both the fire marshal's comment and the St. Paul Fire District comments. Um, these houses are setback twenty feet uh, off the common drive. So that'll allow two cars to park in the driveway and two cars to park in the garage. It's a two car garage. So that's four cars. Uh, although this is a private driveway, um, it's twenty foot in width. I think most of the roads in Aronacote that are dedicated are twenty feet. So I think we're going to have um, plenty of room um, for cars and fire department for safety. Another comment that he mentioned was around the driveway, private driveway regulations. Um, as you guys know, being on the planning board, um, regulations, there are state regulations, county regulations and town regulations. This project meets the town regulations um, for lot configuration. And um, as I stated previously, this is a New York, Monroe County jurisdiction road, Hudson Avenue. Um, our our initial comments are favorable with this. We have um, submitted plans with them. So we're on board with that. So we're not trying to adhere to New York State DOT uh, guidelines. So again, as I mentioned previously, I know that Mr. Hodges' um, neighborhood is being impacted by development. Uh, you know, things constantly change. I understand this was a wooded area vacant for many years. But at this point, um, it um, my my client is looking to develop this in the manner that he wants to. And as I said previously, we're not asking for any area or use variances associated with this project. So I hope Mr. Hodges uh, understands these issues and I hope I address his questions and uh, I'll stop at this point.
Thank you. Carrie, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing unless somebody new has appeared.
I'm going to check that for you right now. I don't know if you can hear me or not.
Yep.
I'm attending.
We saw you twice too.
I'm attending with two computers with the hope that one is that they're going to work, the second one will work better than the first. Um. All right. So I don't see anybody else raising their hand. And I'll say going once, going twice.
Good. So with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Does the board have any other questions for Mr. Sharaba?
Uh, Chairman, if I may uh, just uh, chime in here quickly. Uh, noting the the concerns raised in the discussion about the the parking and the uh, maintenance uh, of the of the road, the private roadway and the in the access. I would just, I would recommend that the the board condition approval on and and notation being added to that subdivision map uh, that requires that that roadway be maintained and and passable at all times. Um, as well as a a requirement that such a a requirement annotation be included in each of the vesting deeds for these parcels that will uh, I think go uh, take the necessary steps to ensure those um, obligations are are adhered to.
Thank you. Anything else from the board members? Mr. Chairman, before we, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I just want to make sure that uh, the applicant doesn't have any issue with uh, a condition or or verification that he finalizes the fire department comments with regards to the alignment of the access road and Small Ridge.
Uh, this is John. Uh, we're fine with the condition that was mentioned uh, by council and also the um, the configuration of the end of Small Ridge and the orientation of the new private drive um, to be to work with uh, the highway super and make sure that meets his requirement. As I noted before, that's all in the public right of way. So I don't, it'd be just a slight adjustment of asphalt in that area.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Carrie, would you like to review the seeker before we move on?
I would be happy to. I'm sorry, this is uh, turning into a lot of fun. So um, you all would have received um, I believe at last month's meeting, a copy of a part two and a part three that were prepared. Um, this is an unlisted action under seeker. Um, and in looking at the um, in the various topics and issues that are explored as part of um, the environmental review, there was um, nothing that rose to the level of being a large or moderate adverse impact associated with the development of five residential building lots in an area that is zoned for that for such um, development. Um, further, it's um, similar to other um, properties that that back to um, development along a major roadway. Um, and and there were no issues that rose to the level of um, requiring further environmental analysis as it relates to the project. So we're recommending and um, a negative declaration for the purposes of seeker.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make the motion on seeker if you'd like that, that we do accept the uh, native declaration and this is as an unlisted.
Do I have a second? Was that you, Mr. Reed? I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it was.
Thank you. All right. Um, once again, I'm going to do a roll call uh, for this, for the votes. So um, I'll go first. Blocky is an eye. Mr. Evelyn? Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Hollenbeck is absent. Mr. Huber?
Aye.
Ms. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Palermo is absent. Mr. Reed?
Aye.
And Mr. Richards?
Aye.
It carries it's six eyes. Two absent. So um, Michelle, does it matter who Jack is replacing at this point or? No, okay.
We're fine.
Okay. Can I get, now, I know someone want to make a motion and there is a few conditions. Would you like me to, I'll make a motion. So in regards to PB two zero two zero dash oh three dash four, I make a motion that we approve it with the following conditions. That uh, to the uh, submitted subdivision that notations be made that the roadway is maintained and passable for both the for the access road and the road. In addition, uh, that uh, notes are added to the vesting deeds. And I'm going to ask legal if I I stated that correct correctly. Yes?
Yeah, yes, that's correct, Chairman.
Thank you. And the other condition was that um, the applicant's going to work on the configuration of the Small Ridge and the new access road uh, to work out a better configuration. Probably could say that better. Somebody wants to wordsmith it a little bit.
To meet the conditions of the fire marshal.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, it was the, so the fire, if I'm getting. Fire marshal is not the one who had that concern, it was the fire chief.
Fire chief, that the title I know is incorrect, but close enough.
Well, they're two different people, so I just wanna make sure we get it right.
Thank you. Was there any other conditions to? Michelle, would you like, can you repeat those real quick? I know you captured them.
I have notations be made and passable for the, oh, I, I can't read my writing, I'm so sorry. Notations be made and passable for access road. And then configuration with Small Ridge access road to meet conditions of the, of the St. Paul Fire Department.
Correct. And also notations to be made on the vesting deeds, similar notations.
On vesting deeds. With similar.
Do you wanna add anything to that?
Anybody wanna add to that?
Yeah, just to clarify, the, the notation on the subdivision map and with respect to any inclusion in the vesting deeds would be both that access road, the south, as well as the, you know, the private drive, the main.
And private drive.
With that, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. All those in favor, once again, uh, roll call. Blocky's an eye. Mr. Evelyn? Uh, Ms. Hollenbeck is absent. Mr. Huber?
Aye.
Ms. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Palermo's absent. Mr. Reed? Mr. Reed?
Aye, sorry about that.
No problem. And Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Once again, it's. Six eyes and two absent. It passes. Thank you, Mr. Sharaba. Good luck with your project. Think he dropped. Did he drop?
Showing mute on mine.
Okay.
I think overlord Carrie has him muted.
I'm here if you can hear.
I do not. I have, I have zero control over anybody right now and has, as this application stands right, right now.
Mr. Sharaba passed. Thank you for doing business.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you. With that, Michelle, can we please move to the next case?
Oh, yes. Uh, next item on the agenda is case number, uh, P B two zero two zero dash oh three dash five. Upon the matter of request by Skylight Signs, acting as agent for Bill Gray's first signage approval to replace the existing freestanding sign on purpose forty-eight seventy Calva Road in a C business district.
So I am, we're gonna be promoting, uh, Dan and Mike, Michael, um, Dan Gray and Michael Bonano to, um, as panelists in just a moment. So Dan and Mike, you are now part of the meeting and able to make apple, or make your presentation to the board.
Am I unmuted?
You are unmuted.
Good evening. Um, um, thanks for, uh, working through your technical difficulties. Um, we're here, uh, for final site plan approval for the, uh, the sign at forty-eight seventy Calva Road, Bill Gray's. During the workshop.
State your name again and address. Sorry.
My name is Daniel Gray. Uh, corporate address is nine sixty-four Ridge Road, Webster, New York.
Thank you.
Uh, at the workshop last Monday, we presented, uh, new configuration for the sign. I believe we addressed all the, uh, the issues that, uh, the board had on the previous planning board meeting. And, uh, we're just here this evening to see if we can obtain final site plan approval for the sign. If anyone has any, uh, further questions, both Mike and I are here to answer them.
Thank you. Before I go to public hearing, is there any comments from the board? First, I would like to thank you for listening to the board and coming to the last workshop, um, addressing all the things that we brought up. Anybody else from the board? Who's to speak?
Can we get the temps on the lights?
I believe Mike sent those in to Carrie.
And Michelle, and I believe it was forwarded.
Okay. Can somebody just tell me I missed it?
So the, and I, I'm gonna summarize and certainly Mike can jump in if I got it wrong. I think the temperature on the bulbs themselves inside the casing of the, of the signage is seventy-five hundred, but that's not the, the, um, temperature that you'll see on the outside because of the coloring of the panels and the encasement of the signage. That doesn't reflect how bright it is on the outside. And Michael, Mike can certainly correct that statement if it's, if I'm remembering off the top of my head inaccurately.
Yeah, this is Mike Bonano, Skylight Signs, sixty Industrial Park Circle, Rochester, New York, one four six two four. And it is, uh, seven thousand Calvin.
Oh.
And that's just our standard, uh, true white, uh, that we use for every sign. And that's what the sign industry uses.
And I think that our last conversation, the last time we had a discussion about an internally illuminated, illuminated sign, we kind of thought that the brighter white was better for signage versus, uh, when we tend to like to go down a little bit because we thought that the warmer light that we usually prefer might make the sign look dingy or, or dull with that type of signage.
I agree with you, sir.
Yeah, I understand that we had that conversation. I also know that the folks at Marshals came in at a lower Calvin temp.
Yeah, but that wasn't for sign lighting.
That wasn't for signage.
Yeah, I, I believe that was just the sconce lighting that we were talking about there. Sign lights, um, you know, are, are typically a pure white light so that they get, uh, accurate color rendition for, you know, the other colors on the signboard. So I, I think this is pretty, uh, standard.
Alright.
That's correct, sir.
I don't have any further questions, Bernie. Thank you.
Thank you. If no, anyone, anybody else on the board have any question?
I'll just reiterate the comments from the chairman and thank you for your flexibility with the sign design. We really like it. We, I, I mean, I, I really like it and I really think that the, uh, the, the modifications are, are, are really top notch. And I also wanna thank all the people who, uh, wrote in and gave us comments. I think that that gave us stuff to work with.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you. Um, with that, I believe we left the public hearing open on this. Is that correct?
And Michelle, was there also a tabled item? Do they have to vote it off the table?
Correct. The tabled item last month and the public hearing, I have the record of motion here. Let me just find the correct one. For forty-eight seventy, yes, the public hearing was left open and it was tabled at the last meeting. So I need a motion to remove it from the table.
Well, I guess we should have done that earlier, but I'll, I'll make that motion that we move, uh, P B two zero two zero zero three five, um, off the table for consideration by the full board.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
So now am I, can I?
Do we need a vote on that motion or no?
Yes.
Yes.
To reopen, okay. I'll make a motion to open up the public hearing.
Yep.
Is there a second?
We need a vote for the.
You need a vote.
Off of the table? For the table? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, Blocky, uh, let's do the roll call. Blocky is eye. Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Hollenbeck is absent. Mr. Huber?
Aye.
Ms. Murray?
She's muted.
Jackie, you still on?
No, she's muted. I, I don't think I've muted her.
Jackie?
Well, um, here we go. There you are.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo's absent. Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Carrie, six eyes, two absent. Now can we move to the public hearing? I'd like to reopen the public hearing. Is there anybody here that wants to speak to that, Carrie?
So I don't have any attendees other than, um, the applicant and his representative. Michelle, are you able to check to see if any emails have come through related to this particular application while the meeting is going on as part of live testimony?
Yes, I can. I am nee- I am not seeing any emails in my planning board, um, inbox. I did receive an email from a resident. Let me just pull it up. Um, that she was just, um, oh, that was, I'm sorry, that was an old one. Bear with me, please. Here it is. Today, five oh four. Thank you for your info. She didn't understand what the, her email explains. I don't know what the seven thousand K means, but I'm sure the planning board will review it to ensure it meets the requirements. Otherwise, the new sign is an improvement on the original design and is more aesthetically pleasing. Thanks for listening to the residents.
Thank you. Is that it, Michelle?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So would the applicants like to respond to that? Any of those? Any comments?
Well, I, I'm not sure if it really needs response. We've, uh, addressed the, uh, the, uh, the temperature in Kelvin of the sign as something that, uh, is pretty standard in the sign industry. And, uh, beyond that, I think that, uh, as the, uh, email said, it's, it's gonna be a great improvement for the, uh, that area.
Go to. Great. Thank you. Does the board have any, uh, I'm gonna close the public hearing unless somebody has appeared, Carrie. Let me ask you. Nobody else has appeared.
No one has appeared. I will double check. I'm seeing still only two attendees and that would be Dan and Michael.
Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing. Someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I just wanna, uh, remind the applicants that we did have a discussion about the, uh, I'm turning on and extinguishing the lights and I will include that as a condition to the motion. If I can go ahead and make that now on P B two zero.
Hold on. Ellen, Ellen, hold on one second. I did wanna mention to everybody, just to remind them, we had previously determined this was a type two seeker action at the previous meeting. So I just wanna put that on the record. So Ellen, go ahead. Thank you.
On P B two zero two zero zero three five, um, that we approve the, uh, application as presented with the condition that the lights are extinguished upon closing of the business and are turned on one hour previous. The reason that I'm asking, and I'm just putting this out for the board, not for the record, um, for the extinguishing of the light at closing is that this is sort of a sensitive area, um, considering the residential nature that appears around them.
Okay. That's fair.
That's the end of the motion.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Thank you, Mr. Huber. Uh, roll call vote. Blocky is an eye. Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Hollenbeck is absent. Mr. Huber?
Aye.
Ms. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Palermo is absent. Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
That carries six eyes and two absences. Thank you once again, uh, for working with the board. Uh, we appreciate it and best of luck and hopefully you're gonna open soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your input and, uh, hope to see you down there.
See you later. Us too. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I know, thank you.
With that, Michelle, do we have any minutes or do we cover those before the meeting started? No, go ahead. Do we have any minutes to cover?
Yes, we have minutes. I would need a motion to, uh, approve them as amended.
I made, I made some amendments or one amendment when the meeting started. Um, and it was just changing the word till into until. Um, so I make a motion to approve the me, the minutes as amended.
Is that good?
Can you give the dates on, dates on that minutes, please, Mr. Evelyn? Just for the record.
Can't because I don't have it in front of me, but maybe Michelle could help me.
April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty?
Yeah, those ones.
I missed seconded.
All those. I would need a second, please.
Spencer.
I, I was the second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Spencer. Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna ask for a roll call. Blocky's an eye. Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Hollenbeck is absent. Mr. Huber?
Aye.
Ms. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Palermo's absent. Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
It carries six eyes, two absences. And I believe that concludes our business for the evening. Is that correct? Anything else, Carrie? Michelle?
I think that is it. Wrap this one up.
Okay.
Motion adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you for everybody's patience tonight. Thank you. Take care, stay safe.
We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the Ronicway Planning Board on I C A T Government Access.